Good evening. Pleasure to be with you again tonight. I'm joined here by Wes Gallit of First Strategic, who is the consulting group that is working on this project along with other sub consultants for the building reuse implementation strategy, as well as Tim Coleman from Blue Ocean, who is not only part of the consulting team to evaluate the reuse and repurposing of some of our large format buildings that are currently underutilized or vacant, but also is a potential new business to the city. As at our last meeting, you approved an exclusive negotiating agreement with Blue Ocean to bring their operation of biomanufacturing into the city. So, thank you for joining us today. Of course, our illustrious Susan Deludun, who has joined us as well. So, just to reflect briefly and rewind the tape as to why we're here. Back in the spring, there was an interest on the part of the city council to look at our large format existing buildings and to see how we might implement an action-oriented, specific implementation strategy to not only better understand what the market potential is for targeted industries coming into these buildings, as they represent significant underutilized space in the city, but also how might we bring those targeted end-users from our EDIS and what would they be looking for, not only in terms of a building location, but a building condition? So, part of the consulting scope that we'll be talking about tonight, which is still a work in progress, covering just Phase 1 of a two-phase scope, is to look at the market potential as well as the building conditions. So, in terms of what we're looking to talk about today, we want to bring the council up to speed in terms of what EDAB has already heard, as to where are we with the implementation strategy. As I mentioned, we're in Phase 1 completion of a two-phase project. Phase 1 looked at the economic viability and market evaluation. Is the Peoria sub-market and the West Valley market generally an area where targeted industries would come in? And under what conditions? The actual buildings under consideration, what is their condition? What would need to be invested in them to make them turnkey and ready for a targeted end-user if they were to come to our city? And then what federal and state or other funding sources might be available to help us with improving or repurposing those buildings, should we actually find targeted end-users that would come in? Phase 2 of the work to be completed is the actual completion of the strategy that takes all that analysis into account and actually then sets an action-oriented path forward. That'll be coming back to you once that strategy is completed. So, with that as kind of a setting of the table, I'd like to turn it over to Wes, and he will walk us through his presentation.
So, our part of the project is lots of building review and... ...of the project. Price Waterhouse Cooper's, who's been keeping an eye on the project as to accuracy. Blue Ocean Biomanufacturing, who's here, who's going to talk in a few minutes about what they've been doing. And AES Clean Technologies, which is Blue Ocean's engineering firm that's done a due diligence on the buildings as well. So, we've come at this with a great group of partners. What we'll talk about tonight is Phase 1 of the building reuse study. Scott went through the history of that pretty well. I have the scope of work here, if any of you are interested in the exact scope of work that we've been working on. We went through a RFP process and finalized that scope of work in a negotiation with the city. And we've been working on it full-time since that we started in September 19th. It's been quite a project. The scope was pretty extensive, and we have been doing an enormous amount of due diligence on the project. Phase 1A was the building reuse economic viability section of the project. We did a SWOT analysis of the targeted industries to determine whether or not the targeted industries were viable, generally for the city of Peoria, and specifically for the buildings, the subject buildings in the study. But we then benchmarked Peoria against similar-sized and situated cities around the country to kind of understand whether or not we were, Peoria had an economic advantage or disadvantage over those kinds of cities. Then, we did an economic viability of the buildings to determine whether they would be attractive or not to the targeted industries. And all through this process, we've worked hand-in-hand with Blue Ocean as an end-user who wants to come to the city of Peoria. And they studied all the phases of the project. So, we had an actual end-user who was looking at the economic viability, whether Peoria was a good place, whether the demographics were correct, whether the marketplace was strong enough for a biomanufacturing company. And then, through the building phase, doing due diligence on the buildings to see if those particular buildings could be reused for their purposes. And so, we've had this ability to look at it from the eyes of the end-user, which has been enormously helpful, because then that tells us, we know what to look for. We know what the pitfalls are, and we know what arguments might be made by end-users. I'm going to kind of buzz through this, because we want to have a dialogue with you as well at the end. The SWOT analysis of the targeted industries, what we found, and we said, okay, does this make sense? Is the demographics the right? Are the workforce analysis proper? Is the educational attainment of Peoria area strong enough? We looked at the 30-minute commute shed, as well as the city proper, to see if those issues worked. We looked at clustering, whether or not there were business clusters of similar kinds of targeted industries in the area, and to generally make a determination whether those were acceptable for the targeted industries. And what we found was generally, the SWOT analysis of targeted industries, generally, the advanced business services, including data centers, mostly including data centers, was viable for the community. Advanced business services typically utilizes a lot of office space. And there is a challenge in Peoria of significant vacant office space, but the data center part of it and call center part of it was a very viable activity for the community. Advanced manufacturing, Maxwell Technologies helped us in a large measure by looking at the same thing in National Search, which they determined Peoria was the acceptable place for their advanced manufacturing operation. And Blue Ocean helped us with that, too, because they have elements of advanced manufacturing as well. Bioscience, and Tim helped us considerably in this aspect. Is the bioscience area strong enough in Peoria? Is it acceptable? And we found that it was through a lot of work that Tim did as well. Healthcare, we know that healthcare is strong in Peoria. You've got a vibrant healthcare industry going here. It is one of the areas that does have an industry cluster that is robust. Alternative energy has potential. There's a lot of challenge in the alternative energy sector right now, especially with solar. But the alternative energy would be a viable industry. Telecommunications, mostly connected ground telecommunications expansion as the community grows and has more and more residential development in the greenfield areas of the community. And higher education. And higher education is a robust, attractive market segment right now. So, that is doing very well. And the activities that Scott and Maria have been engaged in have been very positive, as well as all the factors that we've figured in. Less viable at this time would be corporate or divisional headquarters. There are greenfield opportunities in the north, along the 303 corridor, that may make for a very positive corporate or divisional headquarters kind of development. But at this current time, there's not enough Class A office space in Peoria that's vacant that would be that attractive. So, in the future, we can be hopeful about that. Research and development, the same goes for lab space and the kind of clustering that is engaged in and near the research hubs of the community, which typically are in Tempe and near ASU. So, that's where the research and development is headed right now. And at this time, Peoria doesn't have a lot of lab space. For the buildings themselves, then we looked at whether the buildings would support the same kind of industries. And we found that the same thing was true with the buildings. Now, each building is not acceptable for every industry, but each building does have an attractive quality for a particular industry. But those that would not work would be corporate and divisional headquarters and research and development, because the buildings that we were looking at are not office buildings, and they are not laboratories and wet labs and that kind of thing. So, the SWOT analysis mirrored for generally acceptable and for the specifics for the buildings. Then, we also looked at comparable cities. So, the comparable cities that we looked at were geographically similarly located, similar in size, and similar in makeup to Peoria. And what we looked at were metropolitan areas around the country. So, Tacoma, Washington, and Seattle, Worcester, Mass., which Tim is very familiar with, because that's where he's from, and Boston, Pasadena, Texas, and Houston, Lakewood, and Denver, West Valley City, and Salt Lake, Garland, Texas, is near Dallas, Kansas City, Kansas. And Hayward is in the Bay Area, Oceanside, San Diego, and Corona, and Fullerton are in the Los Angeles area. These cities are similarly located to the airports in those communities. They're similarly situated on a freeway system, and they're similar-sized to this community. What we found, and Glendale, of course, and Chandler and Gilbert, who you're familiar with, what we found was that Chandler and Gilbert have distinct advantages. Peoria has a distinct advantage over everybody else. And part of the reason why is because we're in Arizona. And so, we have a very positive dynamic economic development situation here. The state has done a lot to add to the toolbox of economic development. And the cost of housing is so much less expensive, especially in California, where the cost of living is almost two times higher than in Arizona. And the regulatory environment here is much, significantly better. So, while California offered some great opportunities, Peoria had a distinct advantage over those communities. So, the next phase of the study, Phase 1B, and sort of the end of Phase 1A, was the building review. And the building, these are the buildings that were subject in the study. There was one additional, which is Building F at the Arrowhead 101 Business Park, but it's been leased, and so it was out of the study before it started. The Peoria Town Center, which you're all familiar with, former Smithy's Building, Goodwill Building, that is just north of the Smithy's Building, the Arrowhead Business Park 101E, I'm sorry, Building F, and Olive Industrial Building. And then, the building that is not on here, for some reason, is the former Best Buy Building. And I'll show you it on the map. So, as you can see from the map, these buildings are situated, the former Best Buy Building is at Lake Pleasant Parkway Center. Building number 1 is the Peoria Town Center, which is right across the street from us. Building 2 is the former Smithy's. Building 3 is the Arrowhead 101 Business Park Complex, which is at Thunderbird and the 101. Building 4 is the Olive Industrial Building, which is right off of Olive in the southern part of the city. Building 5 is the Selden Industrial Building. Building 6 is the former Best Buy. And Building 7 is the Goodwill Building. So, you can see that they're generally located in southern parts of the city, and three of them are in Old Town proper. Because three of the buildings are in Old Town proper, what we looked at is those buildings as a unit. And one of the things that we were looking for is how do you create an economic development opportunity for Old Town? And that goes with the investment, significant investment of Old Town, the building that we're sitting in today was the start of that, as well as the significant streetscaping that's been done, and the Peoria Center for the Performing Arts, which was built. So, there's a significant amount of infrastructure that's been invested in Old Town, as well as a significant amount of planning that's been done. The Peoria Old Town Revitalization Study in 2009, and then in 2011, the Old Town Specific Plan. Those elements show a commitment by the city to Old Town, and we believe that continuing that progress would be really important. One of the advantages of this project is that, as it's gone on, there's been movement on the properties that we have looked at. And, for example, the Goodwill Building has been entered into sale. It is going to be torn down and rebuilt as a new Goodwill facility. So, you'll have a brand-new building in downtown. And as part of that project, there's going to be a five-acre pad that's going to be available for development. That signals progress, continued progress in the Old Town community. The former Smithy's Building, we'll talk about in a few minutes. And then, that leads to the potential for redevelopment by the new owner of the Peoria Town Center. And he's a motivated owner, who I think has exciting opportunities ahead that we'll discuss. The Peoria Town Center, the owner bought the property with an intention to have a healthcare use, a behavioral healthcare use in the project. He has been anxious to do that for some time. He owns other property in the city of Peoria, but is now committed to utilizing and redeveloping the Peoria Town Center for that use, but he needs other uses as well. The economic development staff has been very successful at discussing higher education, which is what the owner would like to have on the property, and have been working with a potential user there. We have also identified an additional higher education user that might be able to supplement that kind of a use. But what's missing right now is a vision for the project. So, as part of the study, we brought a developer who has a long-time history of office development and biotech development here in the valley to the owner, in partnership with Velocity Retail, and presented him an opportunity to have a professional, high-quality developer work on that property. The owner decided that he would rather do it alone, go alone, and develop the property. So, that was unfortunate, because I think that it would have been expedited in terms of the development process because of the experience of the developer. But he chose not to do that. And so, we've been working with the owner, Dr. Purewell, to develop that plan. The plan has to be developed so that we can show a vision for the property, because if you drive up there right now and look inside at the Zoco Mall, you see a former flea market. You really have to have some imagination to get to where it can be. But we know that by developing a master plan for that building, it can really accelerate the development opportunities there. We've got, I believe that we have to have some public-private partnership and public resources that help that development. In the past, the city of Peoria has reserved money. I believe, and our team believes, that the city should do that now. The city should reserve some funding for potential end-users. You've got a healthcare use right now, and you've got a potential higher education use that would both be targeted industries that would both revitalize that facility. We think that about $1.5 million would be a good number to reserve for the future, so that there's money on reserve if the owner does come through with the targeted use, the targeted industry use for that facility. And the reason we've spent an enormous amount of time on the Peoria Town Center is because it is a symbol of the community. It's the view shed for downtown. It is right in the gateway area of the city of Peoria. And we just believe that there's great opportunity right now. You've got a motivated owner who wants to have a targeted use that would put a lot of bodies on the streets. It'd be a good economic development opportunity.
Do you have a question, Mr. Haynes?
Yeah. Did you have any thoughts about what the vision might be?
I foresee the vision as a campus kind of environment that Mr. Mayor, Mr. Haynes...
I'm talking about the owner of the Peoria Town Center.
Oh, does he have the vision?
Yeah. You said he's going his own way now. And you said, but he doesn't really have the vision.
We've been working with him since he's decided to do that. And I believe that he does. I believe that he has a vision for the property. We just need to put it on paper. And it's a campus environment that would have a behavioral health use with higher education use. We've got to break it down and get him with an architect that can actually put his vision on paper. And that's what we're working with right now. So, yes.
Higher education.
I think higher education. There's also an opportunity to do some, it's zoned for higher education right now. Education use would work. Yeah, it's a TOD. And so, there's a multitude of opportunities in the TOD. One of them is not however manufacturing. I've worked with the BioInspire group and talked to them about the plans that they have for the next step for the incubator. So, when you graduate from the incubator, where do you go? We want them to go in Peoria. They want to go in Peoria. Otherwise, they've got to pay back their loans. And so, where do we find a 5,000-square-foot suite for them that's able to do manufacturing? I believe that the back of this project, it would be a perfect opportunity for that. You could centralize a loading bay, so that they would be able to use the loading bay in a joint venture. The suites for the manufacturing could be contiguous around that loading bay, and they would be small enough and affordable enough for it to be a perfect spot, and flexible enough to grow into a little bigger site as well.
So, this is the vision, other than higher education?
Right. Yes. So, it would be a campus of higher education and potentially some...
Or two, you think?
Yeah. And potentially some manufacturing, medical device manufacturing as well. So, there's a lot of potential for this. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. What type of higher education?
Well, there's visual arts. There's also an allied health kind of project that we've been talking to. And that would fit well into with Mr. Purewell's needs. So, that's the process on Peoria Town Center. The former Smithy's Building is equally important. It is a problem. It's been a problem for a long time. When Tim and I went to look at it the first time, we went inside, you know, it was pretty scary. It was like a horror movie, actually. We had our flashlights and our helmet lamps, and I just was waiting for somebody to reach out and scare me. So, it was, and if you've never been in, you should go. It's exciting. Get your adrenaline going. The building, our engineers looked at it. They believe that demolition is the best scenario for the building. It's been looted. It's been robbed of all its, any kind of value in terms of electricity, copper has all been looted out of it. The police and fire have had to go there on numerous occasions in the past. It's boarded up, and the boards come down. People are camping in there. And it is really a difficult situation. One of the recommendations that we have made is that, through the land banking funds that the city have, that they try and buy the property, that you try and buy the property. The city of Chandler has a blighted property demolition voluntary program for residential. One of the recommendations in the further report is going to be for the city to look at a possibility that there may be a program like that for commercial buildings that would... And in Chandler, the way they do it is they pay for 75% of the demolition of the building. The demolition of this building is a little more significant, because it's got asbestos. And we had it estimated at $500,000 for the demolition of the building. We believe the value of the building is between $700,000 and $1 million, and that's just the value of the land. That's what our broker's opinion of value suggests. But we've also been working with a developer who's very interested in the possibility of higher-density residential with mixed-use retail. And that developer would help the city purchase the property. There are other developers who could serve the same purpose, to negotiate with the bank to get a better price, and possibly, depending on the situation, buy the building itself if, with commitments from the community, that this was the use that they wanted to do. So, I think if the city had, if the city showed an interest in that kind of a development, that there would be developers who are interested. I know one for sure. And I didn't want to presume the council's opinion and talk to more than one, but I know that there is one that is interested in that kind of a process.
The title situation, and I know you've done some research, is complicated with back taxes and liens and so forth. Any ideas on how that issue could be addressed? Any ideas on how that issue could be addressed?
Well, I think that using a private sector negotiator, you could, the bank, and Mike and I were, were just talking about this, you know, the bank's going to have to write down some of that. If they see the city coming, they might think that they can get away with, you know, trying to sell it to you for full face, or full lien value. The, the liens and so forth have been, you know, people have walked away from them. It's in receivership, and there is a, you know, need to rid the property by the receiver. So if you have the right negotiator, I think that that would work, and I, that's one of our recommendations.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, but you're recommending residential development there, mixed-use with residential?
I, well, I think that the, the market would have the highest appetite for that.
As I know, it's a little further west on Grand Avenue. They are doing finally, again, looking at putting housing in there.
Then, from, you know, I'm a planner nerd, right? I was on the planning commission, and, and from a planning nerd's perspective...
It's higher density.
Right, higher, higher density. When you look at putting more bodies in Old Town, and you couple that with the opportunities that there are at Peoria Town Center, Peoria Place, and, and here at City Hall, by adding those, that, that kind of density, and more people living in, in the Old Town community, it makes your TOD work better for transit development on the Grand Avenue corridor. And it also adds that vibrancy that is really needed in, in the Old Town community. And I think it would have a very positive influence on the, being able to bring higher education into Peoria Town Center because of the close proximity for students and faculty to stay there.
If I might interject, the zoning hasn't been put on it. When you did the Old Town revitalization plan, you designated it as a flexed mix-use, looking at people drawing types of activities, entertainment, convention center, hospitality. But within a flex mixed-use zone, when the council looks at that with the planning department, you can add a housing component to that because it makes it more vibrant and economically viable for these other uses. So you have the opportunity to make that decision in the future.
So that's Smitty's. Goodwill Building is going to be, that building that you see in the picture is going to be history, and there will be an opportunity for a new Goodwill Retail Center, which will, you know, the building was built in 1975. So it will be a nice new building that will add to the Old Town acceleration. It also opens up a five-acre pad for a build-to-suit or a spec building on the property, which would be pretty exciting as well, and may have a variety of possible uses.
Mr. Ames?
Yes, Goodwill, Smitty, that five-acre pad, would those people be interested in moving kind of just across the street and having a larger complex of...
On, for the, for mixed-use development?
Mixed-use.
I hadn't, I have not talked to them specifically about that. And I don't know if the five-acre pad offers enough property to, to do that on it.
No, not the five-acre, but the Smitty property.
And combine them both?
Yeah.
I don't know. The MAC company is involved in this process. They're, they're very smart. They're very good. And I'm sure they have a plan. They're excellent. So I don't know. I, we, we didn't broach that idea, but it's one that we could.
And, and just for clarity, the, the MAC company's plan is, they're currently in escrow. So if they in fact close on the property, it would be to immediately build a 35,000-square-foot, plus or minus, new facility. And then the timing for the demo of the existing 90,000-square-foot, it won't be immediate, it'd probably be within a two-year timeframe. The current Goodwill Building, because they don't want to demo it and incur that expense if they don't know what users are actually coming. So it's not an out-of-the-gate demo, it's, it's a demo over time.
So the next building, so that's the Old Town strategy. The Arrowhead 101 Business Park, Building E, is the building that Blue Ocean is most interested in. It is an excellent building. It's, we built in 2008. It is, it's never been used significantly. It was used for one Christmas season, I think. And so I'm going to turn it over to Tim to let Tim talk about the process that Blue Ocean has gone through on that building, which is significant.
Thanks, Wes. Appreciate you inviting me today. As Wes mentioned, we were very interested in coming to Peoria and really adding to the corridor for cures. I had spent a lot of time working with PricewaterhouseCoopers and Tijin, and so had a, you know, very, had an interest in the area. From our perspective, we were looking to actually set up a Western facility so that we could service clients in the West with our innovative Flex Factory. And these Flex Factories allow us to manufacture a number of different molecules. Instead of the old business paradigm for pharma, which you set up a single facility that you manufacture one molecule here. And so what we've been able to do is harness the power of experience, information sciences, and this new flexible manufacturing platform to be able to not only help young and emerging companies, but also reach even further back into the universities and help translational sciences get new products to the clinic. And so the process we went through was with AES Clean Room Technologies to really look at each one of the buildings. So me and my president, Dave Williams, came out here in October, did a cursory review of each one of the buildings, and then went through, later on in January, in February, went through a process with AES to go through which ones actually look like, feel like, and have the operational capacity to be a world-class, you know, the entry point for Peoria to get into the bio-manufacturing industry that they want to showcase. And the Arrowhead Building is that building. So this would be a showcase property where you would have clients, both national, many of them from San Diego, and some international coming and seeing your city for the first time. This would also be a site where the FDA would be coming to review the policies and procedures, the environment, and the equipment that we're using, to make sure that the molecules we're producing in this facility are actually safe and effective and can be used in clinical trials. So the overall focus of our facility, right, is really to become a regional, have, have a regional focus, so that as we bring more molecules into this facility, there's the opportunity that in the future, if one of those becomes a, or becomes commercially viable and wants to lead to a commercial success, we can take the same quality system and the capital infrastructure that we have here and build a larger facility in Peoria. So we can go from a footprint here that has 40 to 50 jobs in it, to one that has now 100 to 400 jobs in it. So unlike some of the other industries you're thinking about bringing in, this really is focused on, you know, bringing Peoria, you know, a, an industry that has a lot of future growth potentials. And when I talk about these molecules, what I'm really talking about is franchises. So these small emerging companies look at these molecules as billion-dollar franchises. And so they want to make sure that they're going to be manufactured in the most pristine buildings possible. And so when we went through all of these buildings, we were very meticulous about what is going to be the impact, that first curbside appeal, curb, sorry, curbside appeal factor, that not only the clients are going to see, but also the regulatory agency is going to see. And so this, this is part of the methodology we went through. But obviously, you can see from the architectural drawing here, we've gone through a bubble diagram, and there are 13 other architectural drawings behind this, which articulate not only the, how the facility is set up from a modular capacity, but also the HVAC systems, the plumbing, the electrical. And then when you start building these facilities, what the regulatory agency wants you to understand is, what's your movement of people? What's your movement of raw materials? What's your movement of finished material? How are you going to ship it? How are you going to dispose of stuff? And so all of this is set out very early in the, the planning process and put together into these documents, which are known as the base design. And so the paradigm that we're looking to change here is something that, this is the old drug paradigm. Big pharmaceutical companies would look at 5,000 to 10,000 compounds. 250 of them would become pre-clinical candidates. Five would advance into clinical trials, and then eventually you'd have one compound approved. That paradigm is changing because you have organizations like Tijin, who are working on personalized medicine initiatives, which, where they can go in and they can define, you know, what's happening in someone's brain tumor, and inform a manufacturer like us, what medicines do we actually have to make? So in the small-batch facility that we're talking about, we'll be able to make medicines that might only treat 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 patients. But these are going to be highly valuable, life-saving medicines. And so the paradigm of drug development is changing away from mass processing to more localized, personalized treatment. And so I sort of went through this a little bit earlier on, but, you know, we went through each one of the buildings and were able to give Wes insight into, from a manufacturing, from a bioscience perspective, how could we reposition each one of those properties? And so some of the things we looked at was, the HVAC systems are really important in these facilities. And so, you know, what capacity does the roof have? You know, I know some of the buildings actually had wooden I-beams, and so you wouldn't have the capacity to, you know, really have the HVAC system sitting on top of these roofs. And then some of them didn't have the power capacity. So the Arrowhead Building has 1,300 amps, which is more than enough amperage to cover the, the power that we need. But some of these had much smaller electrical loads. And some of them weren't access, didn't really have access to really tier-one internet capacity. And this is one of the things that we depend on. As I told you, it's experience, information sciences, as well as the flexible disposable manufacturing platform that we're putting together. So in summary, you know, what we want to do here is really, you know, be the fathers of an industry for Peoria so that we can build a scalable bio-manufacturing cluster here that allows us to really work with Tijin, work with some of the other institutions in Chandler and Scottsdale, TD2. And we think we've, we can do this in a very economic, feasible way. So we do have an existing relationship with Worcester Polytech in Massachusetts. As Wes was mentioning, we do have a connection back there. And they've put up a fully integrated training manufacturing facility. So initially, we would have a capacity to ship students there, who are high school and associate students, to be trained on, on our equipment there. So the process we'll be going through in the next coming weeks will be, how do we put together a robust public-private partnership? In much the same way the public-private partnership for Tijin came together to actually put this footprint in Peoria and begin to, you know, create a new bio industry for you. Thank you.
Mr. Ames? Oh, I'm sorry, Tony was first.
Thank you.
Yes, minute ago.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. It seems like a big exercise for 40 jobs. Is there something else? Is there something, a bigger picture here?
So as, as I mentioned, you know, there is this capacity. Once we bring a molecule to a region, this is a historical pattern, but the place where it's manufactured for the first time, and it's integrated into that type of manufacturing system, not only the capital equipment, but the quality system, it's, it sort of captures that molecule. And so if you're able to do a number of molecules in your facility, you'll actually be able to have the opportunity to transfer many of those. And so when Wes and I talk about a bio-manufacturing cluster, we're actually saying that this is an accelerator. We can bring a lot of different molecules into this facility so that in the future, the potential to capture each one of those quote-unquote "billion-dollar franchise" molecules and have them manufactured in facilities just like Celgen's would be possible. So you're looking at upsides of, you know, 10x in job growths just on a single molecule.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ames?
Yes, you talked about the FDA and apparently the new model now, they want to move faster. It's no longer seven to 10 years. And one of the things they're looking at is production of the molecules, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so in...
And you would be in that stream then? And what is it, what's the timeline dropped down to for them with, under this new model? This is like a year or two now they've made this decision?
It's a little bit longer than that, but it's, it's much, much shorter than the, the original timelines. So in December, the FDA, or Congress approved the FDA Safety and Innovation Act in December 2012. And what this does is this really gives FDA the latitude to work with small organizations who are trying to develop drugs for orphan diseases. And these are drugs where you might have a prevalence of less than 200,000 patients have the disease in the nation. So an example would be brain cancer or ovarian cancer. And so what they've done is they've now said that you can have the capacity to get, you know, these drugs approved faster, but you have to have a plan in place to not only manufacture today, but also the scalable, the scalable molecules. So this regulatory statute essentially gives us wind in our back because every small emerging company who even thinks they want to get a drug into patients has to be thinking about manufacturing from day one.
Dan, my other question, are you looking at an option on a lease for this building, with this building then?
So, yeah, so we'll be, over the summer period, we'll be working with the MAC Building to figure out what all those, and so Jones, Jones Lang LaSalle will be representing us in those discussions.
And Maxwell is in the same complex, right?
Maxwell will be right behind us, that's correct.
Before you continue, I want to give you a little notice that we've got contentious issue at the council meeting at 7:00. You can kind of hear them.
I will move, I will move expeditiously, sir. The, because the next buildings are a little less interesting and more challenging. The Olive Industrial Building is at 8009 West Olive. It is, it is a very nice building. It is, it has 5,000 square feet of office space and about 40,000 square foot of former warehouse that could be used for industrial purposes. It has been empty for some time and with not a lot of activity. It was an LG facility that supported the construction industry back during the boom. And, and so in the Northwest Valley, it was a central warehousing facility. It is, we, we believe that advanced manufacturing or alternative energy could be used there. I also discussed the BioInspire concept, but the BioInspire people thought it was a little physically dislocated from where they were. The, one of the things that we've been looking at closely, and we've been in contact with people trying to get into Lockheed Martin, for example, as a support or a company for the F-35 mission at Luke. And we've been working, we've had contact and conversation with Congressman Frank's office about helping us with that. There's great opportunity for support organizations for the F-35 mission, and we believe that, that this building would be a perfect site for that. It's close to Luke. It's pretty much a straight shot. And, and so that's, and we're also looking at home building and construction. The Selden Building has a lease offer, we think, right now. The Selden owners have not been interested in participating in the study. We've studied it. We think that it is also 25,000 square feet. It has the same kind of capacity for the F-35 mission and home building and construction support. But the building owners want to do this on their own, and they're, and they are confident that they're going to have a lease. The former Best Buy Building is hard to put an alternative use into. The former Best Buy Building is hard to put an alternative use into. It's a, the CCNRs require retail use, it's a continued use for ma, it's going to, it's a great retail spot, and it's going to be a retail spot, and Vestar owns the property, and they want it to be a retail spot. And, and they have confidence in the marketplace, and they have confidence that they're going to land somebody for that retail use, and we're watching the retail market as well to market to retail users. So that, that is a summation of the buildings. It is a summation of what we have done in the first phase of this project. We are currently in the process of a detailed strategy with detailed recommendations to move forward, as well as potential end-users that we've been trying to work with and develop for those uses, as well as the targeted industries we think in the future should be pursued for those projects. And so we hope to have that to you soon. It is, I will be anxious to get it done, so I've been working weekends, but we are doing, I think we've done a very thorough investigation, and in large measure, thanks to Velocity, Retail, PricewaterhouseCoopers, and especially to Tim Coleman.
Mr. Haynes? Yeah, so you've got Blue Ocean here, so you're looking to kind of bring other people?
Yes, sir.
To us, is that the-
Yes, we're meeting with end-users.
So you're the first of the next step? Okay, very good.
It's nice to have one, right? For sure.
Mr. Haynes?
Thank you, Mayor. I know there's different phases in the study, and we're going to be going into Phase Two, but why is the study behind? Why are we behind in the study?
Well, the study was scheduled to be 120 days when we bid this project out. We changed the scope significantly. There was additions to the scope in the front, in the first parts of it, and it's been more complicated than we thought when we first got into it, because there was a lot of detail that we had to go through to get to that point, and so we're trying to move ahead smartly now.
So you made changes to the scope?
The scope was, when we were bidding it, and there was a requirement for 120 days, we didn't anticipate some of the timing challenges, and then the scope kind of expanded at the beginning, the first part of, the first two, A and B, were significant.
I'm not going to ask all my questions, because I know time is limited, but my final question is, in regards to Blue Ocean, and maybe I need some clarification from you, Mayor, we do have an exclusive negotiating agreement with Blue Ocean, but what are the next steps in regards to making a deal happen, if that's the pleasure of the council?
The next steps with the, let me answer it this way. The next steps for the, for the building reuse implementation strategy is, once the strategy is done, we'll bring it back to EDAB, and we'll bring it back to Council on Study Sessions, so you can actually see how the strategy has actually fashioned. To answer your question about Blue Ocean, Blue Ocean and, and me and my staff will be working to figure out what the, the deal points are for a Blue Ocean presence in the city, just like any of the other ENAs that we've done. You know, what is the prospect, business plan, what is, what is the offering, what is the ask, what is the public benefit, all the normal customary questions. We'll then have to negotiate a development agreement, and we'll bring that back to Council when we had those deal points at that time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Garland?
Thank you, I just have a comment, some quick comments, actually. First of all, I appreciate you utilizing Blue Ocean as, as sort of a test for your whole reuse study. I think that was really valuable. It was, it was a value add for us as a city, and hopefully it was a value add for Blue Ocean, and they now see all of the benefits that Peoria has to offer. So I hope that that was a valuable use for both of us, because I think that Blue Ocean has some tremendous things to offer to the city of Peoria. I'm, I'm very excited about what you do. I appreciate what you've done with, with the reuse study. I would be interested in, in some of the, pursuing some of the developer wanting to help out the existing buildings. I would hope that in some cases, they would be more amicable towards that end than they sound like they are, but it sure would be nice if we could facilitate some of that somewhere along the line. And other than that, I think, I think it was a very good idea to, to consider the possibility of ancillary uses for Luke, for F-35. I think that would be great. I hope that our federal government doesn't get in the way of any of those things, and we can move forward along those lines. And with that said, I hope that we can move forward along a lot of these lines. Some of the things that are, you know, pragmatic at this point would be new development, and so I'd like to move forward with that in spite of any other reuse studies that we might have, whatever phases they might be. So, thank you.
Anything else?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The Goodwill property you're talking about, was sometime within the next two years, they will theoretically or hopefully tear it down and rebuild?
That, that was, that was news to me, our conversations with them, they just talked about demolishing the building, but I have no reason to doubt Scott's intelligence, because he's been talking to the MAC people.
Okay, and we don't have any kind of timeline at all on anything else?
Uh-
Of the reuse, not, I'm sorry, not pretty sure. But on the reuse, in terms of the, you know, potential educational use for the, for the dead Walmart site and things like that?
Um, I think that there's some potential, eminent potential for that, and-
Define that. Because governmental imminent is-
Right. In the next four or five, in the, in the next four or five months.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, it's very exciting.
Mr. Gullett, you, you were talking about the Peoria Town Center, and you called it a view shed, I guess, or a gateway to Peoria?
Yeah.
The question is, how critical is it for the council or the city to deal with? And we have closed restaurants, we have the Smithys, we have the Discount Tire that's closed now. How critical is it for the city to deal with those issues in order to bring, in order to boast our economic strategy, or to bring businesses into Peoria?
I think it's really important, because I, we talk to people all the time as we're working on this project about Peoria and, and the Grand Avenue gateway to Peoria. So I think that it's really critical that the, the Old Town and that first site of Peoria be a positive one. I just think it sets the tone for the community, and I think it'll set the tone for a lot of the development on the 303, to be quite frank with you. You know, I've lived here for 27 years, and I remember when our former mayor had the grocery store, the Sun King Grocery Store, you know, and I used to have to come out and have meetings with him, because he was the precinct committeeman as well at the time. And, you know, it's always been a view shed, it's always been that first thing that happens, and I think that we have a motivated owner at Peoria Town Center for the first time in a long time, and I think that that's a real opportunity.
Any questions? Anything else? Thank you very much, we're adjourned. Thanks for your time.